All right, call meeting order. Before I begin, I want to let you know Commissioner Shu contacted me, he fell. So he's not able to make it. We'll check on his condition a little bit later. All right, have a motion to approve the work session agenda, including the changes on page three.
So moved.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed four zero. All right, there are no action items to discuss. And so items for action, the first up, we have Amy Cook with the Soil and Water about a grant application.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me go first on the agenda. We do have a Soil and Water Board meeting to get to. But we are requesting permission to apply for a grant through the North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund. And that's a grant for a cost of community services survey. This is something we've discussed with our Soil and Water Board a bit, and we're all, you know, behind it. This survey would do kind of what that description says and show a cost of community services per land use type. So kind of compare an acre of farmland versus acre of residential and to show what the county is paying for those costs of community services. So asking permission to go ahead and apply for that. We do have already in our Soil and Water budget, the matching funds available.
Anybody got any questions for? All right, we'll just move that to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right, next there, we've got some boards and committee appointments. See if we can do it this way. Four point two through four point eight. No, four point eleven is all juvenile crime convention council appointments. Anybody have any issues with any of those that we need to pull off? All right, we'll move those to the consent agenda. Next, we have four point twelve to four point twenty-two. That's appointments to the Youth Commission. Anyone have any issues with any of those?
Those aren't appointments, though, right? They're removals.
Some of them removals. There's three removals and the rest are appointments. We good to move those to the consent agenda? All right, next we have removal from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Anybody have any issues with that? Okay, we'll move that to consent agenda. Then we have four point two four. It's removal from the Fair Advisory Commission. Anybody have any issues with that one? Move that to consent. And then section four point two five is another Fair Advisory Commission removal. Anybody have any issues with that? All right, move that to consent agenda. And we have four point two six, the final approval of upgraded election equipment. I think we have Carol Soules here.
That would be me. Thank you, good evening. This is just for the approval of the upgrade of our elections equipment. Since I came before you the first time, we've had a simulated election and received a final approval from the State Board and final approval from our board to purchase this, and the funds are in the budget for it. That's it.
No questions? Anybody any issues? We'll move that to consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right, next we have four point two seven, the opioid settlements and interlocutor resolution. Mrs. Pugh?
There she is.
She's coming in on call, just in time.
Good evening. Oops, push this on. Okay, wonderful. So this is in regard to the allocation from Concord to add to our collective pot in Cabarrus County of opioid settlement funds. Concord was large enough as one of the seventeen municipalities in the state of North Carolina that received its own allocation. So they're just offering us those funds to add to our collective pot here in Cabarrus County. Any questions related to that? And I believe that they are going to be voting on that this month themselves. So once that is resolved, then we can collect the funds from them.
Anybody got any questions? Any issues? We'll move that to consent agenda. Thank you. All right, next we have the transportation, DSS transportation grant. It's Charles Ratcliffe.
Good evening, everyone. What I have tonight is the fifty-three eleven grant. It's yearly. This one, this year looks a little different. Typically, it's in two parts, admin and capital. But none of our vehicles met their useful life, so we don't have any capital for FY twenty-seven. So it's just straight admin. It's predetermined by the state. For FY twenty-seven, they have allotted us a hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. The county match on that is fifteen percent, which is nine thousand, four thirty-seven and five cent. This grant does require a public hearing, so we ask that you hold the public hearing at your next meeting and accept the grant and its associated resolution.
All right, anybody got any questions? Everybody in agreement? Move that to consent agenda? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do new business on that one. Okay, I'm sorry, put on new business. All right. Next, we have Jen Howden with the Finance for the Ambulance Receivable Write-Off. All right, sir.
Ready? All right, good afternoon. Each fiscal year, as part of our year-end process, the Finance Department analyzes the ambulance accounts receivable balance. And we ask the Board to allow us to write off a certain amount of that balance so we can better reflect what we believe is collectible. Historically, we've determined that anything over four years old is uncollectible. So we're asking the Board to approve a write-off for fiscal year twenty twenty-one's balance of two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. We'll ask you to keep in mind, this is truly an accounting entry. We do not have any names. We do not have any reason for why they are not paying their receivables. This is truly based on the age of the receivable itself. And also, this does not prevent us from collecting that balance. Our third-party administrator and our great staff, the EMS staff, will continuously look to try to collect those balances. I'll take any questions.
Anybody got any questions?
I'm just, you know, this is a couple of times we've brought up the ambulance services and then these high balances that the taxpayers left with in some cases. So in your mind, is there anything more that we have the ability to do regarding this to see if we can collect this money? Because I hear what you're saying with, you know, we're writing it off just for purposes and when it's not going to stop us from trying to collect that money. But it almost seems when you just write it off that we're just kind of like...
Well, I think on the finance side, we're writing it off in that manner. But the EMS staff does not look at it that way. They are going after the balance. They are doing debt set off when available. I'm not sure, it'd probably be a better question for Jimmy Lenz. Truly what else could be done? But I believe they're using any legal means necessary to collect these balances.
They are, they are. We do pursue it even after this. This is more of an accounting function than anything else. But we do continue to try to get those funds as best we can.
Do you know, like, is it small funds over a lot of people or large amounts in few people?
I do not know. We could find that out, but this is, we're totally looking at it as a timing issue. Or basically, what was outstanding four years ago.
Yeah, we're somewhat limited on it from HIPAA standpoint. But I think maybe we could get some aggregate kind of information on that. We'll work with Jimmy on that.
Yeah, do that, so we know what we're doing. Any other questions? Move that to consent agenda.
Thank you.
And you're going to get that information so we can look at it. All right. All right, next, we have a boundary agreements around Virginia Foale Park. Mr. Doug Hall.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the Board... Oops, there we go. If it pleases the Board, I'm looking at the proposed resolution for you all to consider at the regular session. I think that's really the best summary of it. Michael Miller is here, your Design and Construction Director, if you've got any more specific questions about this. But basically, when we purchased the Virginia Foale Park property in twenty twenty-one, when it was surveyed at that time, there were these slight discrepancies noted. Basically, what you have going on is from the time of Mr. and Mrs. Foale purchased the property and then when these neighboring property owners purchased their property back in the, I believe, the seventies, these discrepancies have existed since that time. I think it has a lot to do with old survey monuments, referencing rocks that aren't there, tree stumps that are no longer there. It's a relatively small area. We've got a no man's land of about six hundred fifty square feet, which Ms. Miles has thought was her property, has been using that as her yard. I think her driveway is in that area. And then we've got two small overlaps. We're talking about one that's about a hundred eighty feet long and one foot wide, then another one that's about forty-three feet long and one foot wide. So very small areas, but it's become an issue now because we want to erect a fence there. And so nobody, I think, has had a concern with exactly where the boundary was until we're talking about putting a fence up. We want the fence to be in the right place. Don't want there to be a question later about whether we put the fence on somebody else's property. So this has come up, and we're now asking the Board to adopt this resolution to execute a boundary agreement. The property owners, Mr. and Ms. Johnson and Ms. Miles and her husband and the county are all agreeable to locating the line in one set positions. Everybody's in agreement. We're just asking to execute this document in order to put it on record in the Register of Deeds. And then the fence project that Mr. Miller has in the planning works can proceed.
Mr. Chairman, sometimes you just have to do this stuff, you know? It may not be pleasant for some of the people involved, but you have to. But my only question has been whether it's going to create a hardship for anybody, and the way you present it doesn't sound like it will.
I don't think so. You know, the one piece that I think might be an issue is the so-called no man's land, which is where Ms. Miles, as I look at the map, she has a driveway there. But we're agreeing to let her retain what basically nobody owns on paper at this point. It's not included in her deed, it's not included in our deed. So we're not giving her that land. We're just agreeing that we're going to follow basically what has been the historical boundary for the past, I think, since the seventies. I think her plat's from nineteen seventy-seven. And so, yeah, the county is not taking anything away from anybody, is my understanding of these maps.
Any other questions? All right, so... All right, we'll move that to consent agenda. All right, next is the lease with Lamar at Progress Place. Mr. Doug Hall again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the Board, when the county purchased the Progress Place building, there was already a billboard facing I-85. Lamar had leased a small triangular piece of property for the billboard. Lamar owns the billboard. So in other words, if the lease was not renewed, they own the structure, they have the right to enter and take down the billboard. But the lease has expired. We had assumed the lease when we bought the building. We've received, I think, prorata rent for the last nine months or so. The lease is seven thousand, five hundred dollars a year. So Lamar is proposing to extend that, a five-year lease with five automatic extensions, ten years being the maximum lease term we can enter into. Seven thousand, five hundred dollars a year, or seventy-five thousand dollars for the life of the lease for this triangular piece. The prior lease did expire. Can't remember off the top of my head if it was August first or August fifteenth. But this would be retroactively effective to July fifteenth. So in other words, they would go back and pay you that initial twelve months' rent going from July fifteenth this year to July fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, upon your agreement to renew this.
My only question is, as I said before, I didn't see it in the lease. What goes on that billboard, it being county property? I don't know who can advertise. We might want to control some of that.
Good question. There is, and it's not in these materials, but we can have you review it for the September fifteenth meeting. Mrs. Ziffer brought that up. I negotiated over the weekend with the attorney for Lamar. I composed a paragraph along those lines, and they've agreed to our proposed language. So we can have that. Wasn't back in time to have it in tonight's materials, but we can have that language for you prior to September fifteenth. In fact, I can go ahead and just email it to all of you, blind copy all of you, and you can see that in advance of the meeting. But it does restrict that. We wanted to be careful there. Private property owners can dictate what goes on a billboard on their property with us being a government. We wanted to walk that line between not infringing or not having anybody interpret it as a First Amendment issue. But I pointed out to them with it being the planned social services location, families and children going in and out there, we did want to have some restrictions on what's there. And like I say, they agreed to it. So I'll share that with all five of you.
So I was just wondering, have there been any political billboards in that location?
I'm not aware of what has historically been there.
Well, I worked with Lamar, they did a lot of my billboards, but I don't know where this location is, so I couldn't say whether it's one of mine sometime or not.
Yeah, well, you know, we, and I don't have the language I drafted in front of me, but you know, off the top of my head, we said no alcohol, no weapons, certainly no adult oriented advertisements, even if it's an advertisement for a legal business, if it's adult in nature, don't want that there. And again, they were fine with all of that. And I'll send that to you. Like I say, I'll email it to you tonight before I forget. And that way, you'll have a couple of weeks to review it. If you have any concerns prior to September fifteenth, certainly let me know, and I can reach back out to their attorney. But it was fairly all-encompassing language because I anticipated them maybe wanting to whittle it back, but they agreed to what we had proposed.
Right, okay.
I would recommend that we put that probably on action if we're going to get other material. Or new business, I'm sorry.
So we'll move that to action item. And we need to review that language a little bit further. All right, next, we have four point three two, the Foster Care and NC Act.
Yes, and so within this act, which references foster care, there is actually something that applies to all city and county new hires effective October first, which requires SBI background checks for any positions working in any capacity with children. And so that's the overview of it. That's why we added it to this agenda at the last moment because it is effective with all new hires after October first. It does not apply to current employees. Of course, we already background check employees in general. We already do SBI background checks for some positions. But this will affect certainly a greater number of positions. And your Assistant County Manager, Dr. Elise Pugh, and your HR Director, Ashley Dobbins, are here with some more information about how it would affect their operations.
Perfect. Is this slide going to come up? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we're here tonight to talk to you about some new legislation around SBI background checks for employees. GS one fifty-three A dash ninety-four point two. The updated requirements are effective October first. So the new legislation states that if a position being filled by a county or city requires an applicant for employment to work with children in any capacity, every Board of Commissioners and City Council must require the applicant, if offered the position, to be subject to a criminal history record check conducted by the SBI. These checks must be conducted in accordance with GS one forty-three B dash one two oh nine dot twenty-six, the statute which authorizes the SBI to provide a fingerprint-based state and national criminal record check to cities and counties. So as Doug said, we currently already background check all of our applicants. And what we currently run now is states that the applicant has lived in, nationwide motor vehicle check, and sex offender registry. So we already do a pretty thorough search on our own. The School of Government interpretation of those positions that may be required to go through the SBI background checking process are those that are responsible for supervising, transporting, interviewing, teaching, coaching, helping, or caring for individuals under the age of eighteen. So in the local government context, this will likely include social workers, parks and recreation staff, EMS employees, libraries, and other roles, each depending on the nature of the specific position's required duties. So for Cabarrus, our initial review included positions in the following areas. Active Living in Parks, about twelve positions. Cooperative Extension, one. EMS, fourteen positions. Health and Human Services, mainly in the social work area, about twenty-one positions. For Legal, one position. Library, fourteen. Soil and Water, four. So each position contains more than one employee. So like with EMS positions, the paramedic with Cabarrus, the paramedic position currently has twenty-one paramedics. So it's a pretty large impact on us. So an applicant offered one of the designated positions will be required to get fingerprinted at the Sheriff's Office. And the Sheriff's Office has graciously offered to waive their ten-dollar fee for our applicants. An HR will be required to work with the applicant on setting up a time to get this done. The applicant signs the consent form, and the fingerprints are sent directly to the SBI. State and national repositories are searched, and results will be returned to the HR office. The cost of the check will be thirty-eight dollars. So we will still have to run our normal background check, which costs on average about eighteen fifty. And that's because the SBI check will only report charges that required fingerprinting. So there may be other charges out there that they didn't have to get fingerprinted for that we may still need to pick up on. Currently, for the Sheriff's Office, it's only taking them about a week or less to receive the results, which is good news. We hope it'll stay that way when all these other applicants get added. We hope, we will still need to figure out how to navigate our out-of-town applicants as well, how to get them in and get them checked. So there's some things we're still going to have to work out. This will require a budget increase. So for FY twenty-five, I did a look back, and we hired approximately a hundred and fifty-eight employees into these qualifying roles. So based on this estimate, we need to recommend increasing the background check budget by about six thousand dollars. And we're working on the budget team to figure that out. So we're here today to share this information with you because the new legislation does state that the Board of Commissioners must require these designated applicants to go through the checks. Do you guys have any questions?
My only question would be, will the Sheriff's Office work with getting those people in between appointments? Like, we're not going to bump any member of the public from their appointment for fingerprinting, correct?
I think with a hundred and fifty-eight applicants, I don't think it's throughout the year. I don't think it's going to be a big ask for Tess's team. And I did talk to them already, and they seemed like it was going to be fine. We just work into their appointments that they already have scheduled.
That's what I was going to say, yeah. We have appointments, and getting that few in, it would not be a problem.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Move that to consent agenda. All right. All right, next is the proposed settlements with Purdue. I believe that's Elise and Doug again.
Yes, sir. If it pleases the Board, Dr. Pugh could answer any questions that you may have that I can't answer. But we've got two additional tentative settlements to tell you about. Back in July, if this sounds familiar, back in July, we had one settlement with Sandoz. And now these two are in a similar posture. So in other words, we've got one settlement with Purdue and affiliated entities, including the Sackler family. And then there's an additional tentative settlement with eight additional lesser-known manufacturers. And so just like the Sandoz settlement, we don't know a dollar figure for these yet. This is going before all the municipalities, including us, to decide how many municipalities are going to elect to participate. Once they know how many municipalities elect to participate, then they can do the math and later report to us how much, the exact dollar figure that Cabarrus would stand to receive. And so just like with the Sandoz settlement, this would come back before you later when we have a dollar figure for you to vote to accept or decline that settlement. But for now, for both of these, the request is for you to elect to participate in these tentative settlements, and then we will upload the documents. I think September thirtieth is the deadline to have the election selected and then uploaded.
Anybody got any questions on that? We'll move that to consent. All right, next we have Chief Burchett about the North Carolina Chiefs of Police Grant.
Good evening. Yes, the first item I have on here is acceptance of grant funding. And it's a one-time acceptance of the money to reimburse us for specifically, it's a state grant, and it's administered by the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police, specifically towards wellness programs and that type of thing. And what we want to do is purchase this software, it's called Essential Personnel, and it logs many different things. One, though, being critical incidents that employees respond to, and it basically does notifications if there's a buildup of critical incidents that they've gone through to see if we have to refer to resources. It also does, keeps track of all sorts of training, org charts, rosters, that type of thing. So it's really important software. And this grant basically pays for one year of the software, and then we can determine if we're going to budget it beyond that. So I'm asking you to accept the funds in the amount of, I believe it's forty-four thousand dollars. Yes, forty-four thousand dollars, five hundred and nine dollars, forty-four cents.
Anybody have any questions on that? All right, move that to consent agenda. All right. Next is Chief Burchett again. This time, the approval of Motorola radio console contract.
Yes, last month I came to you to ask you to accept the funds from the state North Carolina 911 Board. And we had attempted to get this contract before you on that same meeting, but we could not get it to in time. But this is essentially to upgrade the consoles, the radio consoles in our 911 center and the backup 911 center, correct? That do have an end of life. So the monies that we accepted the previous month would go to replacing these radio consoles.
Anybody have any questions on that? I'm sorry. All right, we'll move that to the consent agenda.
And my final item...
Yes, one more.
Yes, is declaring one of our K9's surplus. Unfortunately, it's a younger K9, but has health issues. The vets worked with us. We tried to train, we tried to overcome some of the issues, and it just would not be good to put this dog out in service and would become a liability. So, we are asking you to grant us the ability to surplus the dog. He would go with his handler and become his responsibility. Fortunately, several months ago, I did come to you with the acceptance of the AKC grant that will pay for the replacement of this dog. That is all. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on that? All right, move that to consent agenda. All right, next, we have a resolution amended the Board of Commissioners 2025 meeting schedule. This is for our October Cabarrus Summit. We're going to do a summit in October at the county fairgrounds. And I think we'll have presenting, Lauren, if I'm right, we're presenting an animal shelter in the economic development court. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, we'll move that to consent agenda. All right, we have a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting agenda.
All right, all in favor, say aye. A pass is 4-0. All right, now, I need a motion to go on to closed session to consult with attorney, including pending litigation of the Mike Downs versus Cabarrus County, the James Campbell versus Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, and Steve Morris in his capacity as Board Chairman, and personnel as authorized North Carolina General Statute 143388, 346. Did I do that?
It wasn't you. We need to have economic development.
Okay, and economic development.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we do that, I've discussed something with the Commissioners before. I'm going to talk about it publicly tonight. I don't know how many of you remember or know who Clarence Henderson is, and whether you remember the sit-in at Woolworth's Lunch Counter in Greensboro in 1960? February 1960, I was only five years old. And I saw this on the news, and I asked my dad what in the world was going on. And he explained it to me and told me what a heroic act those fellows did. I was like, how stupid should you be to have a rule like that? Because it was about him not serving black people at the lunch counter. I thought that was absolutely outrageous. And then I learned Clarence Henderson's name. And at five years old, I mean, he became a hero to me and always has been. I never thought I'd ever know the man, but I met him some years back, and we talked, and we became friends. And now, Clarence Henderson calls me his brother, and that's a great privilege to me. There is an organization down home in Craven County called God and Country Christian Alliance, and they're having their banquet, annual banquet on September 15th, which is when we have our meeting. However, I don't see anything that's all that out of whack with the agenda for that meeting. And, you know, I love Clarence Henderson, and they're going to have him as their guest speaker at their annual meeting, going to honor him that night. And I would like to be allowed to have excused absence from our meeting that night so that I can go, and really, not just me, but I'd like to think of it and be able to tell him that I'm there representing the people and the Board of Commissioners of Cabarrus County to honor him that night. So, if it's okay, I won't see you that night, if there are no objections.
No objection here. Anybody have an objection?
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, about the motion for the closed session. All in favor, say aye. All right, go on closed session, approve 4-0. All right, we're in closed session.